Regular meeting of the Board and Trustees to order.
Well, they did what they can.
Steven McFadden.
Sure.
Brad.
Here.
Don Lang. One of the rich kids.
Here.
Thomas Edward Jackson.
Yes, I want to remind everyone that today's meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the website tomorrow. Thank you for that. And now I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance with veteran and VetCor Navigator Michael Root.
The Pledge of Allegiance to defy the United States of America and to repudiate all national standards on nation-wide and private business.
Michael, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, again, this is my, going on my third year here at Big Ben. Coordinator the last year, recently hired as the VetCor Navigator here on campus and also the head softball coach. Many success here at the softball.
Military service?
Military service. I was in the Navy for six years, a submariner.
Very nice.
Under the ocean. Might be places at the end of the North Pole, Norway, Sweden, Denmark, Virgin of Hensel. Travel a little bit, then humpin' out.
What was your longest time out to see?
Ninety-three days.
Wow.
Over three months. You can actually be, well, we gotta have the month full and run around, but I'll call it summer.
Any other questions?
Just one other thing about this coaching and the softball team was, last year's team was recognized for scholar athletes. Big Ben was number seven in the country among all two-year colleges with softball programs for their rating point average. And I think it was like a three-point.
Three-point five-seven.
Okay.
Eighth academic Hall of America.
Congratulations.
And eighth academic Hall of Americas.
All in.
Excellent in the classrooms while I was on the field.
So are you the supervisor?
Yes. That's what I need. I am the tutor. I just make sure that kids get their coaches.
Well, thank you, Michael, very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move into introductions of new employees. Does anyone in the room have some new employees that like dinners?
I'm Debbie Oleski in the Transitional Studies and I have two initial two attributes. As I mentioned before, our open doors program has been increasing rapidly. Last year we were only operating with managing five sessions. This year with the increase, we have eleven sessions that we're operating, including week three, and we have open enrollment. We anticipate that we might have to. But with that, we've had pleasure of hiring two case managers to be able to work with our open doors program. And we have Vanessa Raymond, who actually used to work, and who actually used to work here at our Central Washington University site. She has been with a lot of the staff and our students as well.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
So I also did most of my case management at Samaritan Hospital and Samaritan Clinic. And usually there I work with the clinical patients, but that's where most of my experience comes from.
Any other questions? Thank you. Congratulations.
And our other program coordinator for our open doors program is Maddie Moore. And she was the Director of Communications with the.
Great. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
I'm just excited to be returning to higher education. I started out at Eastern and in the Florida. So excited to return to these students.
Trustees. Thank you very much. Tell us a little more about your open door program, right? I need to know just a little.
Okay, so our open doors program, we have a contract with both the Reagan School District and Moses Lake. And we serve students that are very deficient. And last year we also were in partnership with Philsore downtown, so Philsore also serves the students. But this year we are the sole provider in the area and therefore we've just increased our numbers. And we have wonderful staff now. We're really structuring the program so that we can prepare our students to transition to college. And we are introducing our six areas of interest. And so this fall we'll actually also be providing them a transitional boot camp. Where in four weeks they will be coming into the classrooms, observing classrooms that will be identified as areas of interest. And be able to find out what pathway they want to enter and then.
Very good. Thank you.
This is a very pointed question, I'll do anyway. I've been working as a hearing officer for the whole of our school district. They have kids that were suspended from school, no options for them. Tried to do their online program, but really wasn't appropriate for most of those kids. Could those kids be involved in your program?
Definitely. We can get your contact on Moses Lake School District. We are working for you. Before we only worked with one counselor, now we're working with all eight counselors.
Great to know. Thank you.
Next up is the consent agenda. Oh, whoops. Sorry about that.
We have more.
The taller, Emily.
I know. Anyway, Chamber Guard, who was less, and she could be a consultant coordinator in our office. Probably way, way too long. She was little and so anyway, we used to work together in our district conditions of hospitals.
So my background's in the healthcare industry. I worked for a number of years at Samaritan Healthcare. The last ten to twelve years or so, I've been in the human resources field. I've served in a lot of the different functions, mostly in recruiting. And I've dealt with health for a little while as well, and I recruited.
Thank you. Trustees.
Everyone welcome.
Congratulations. Let's see. Anyone else?
Oh, wait, there's more.
I'm very happy to introduce Rebecca Ozuna. She's a new program assistant, assistant down in student administrative support services. She is our front desk staff and she's there to main bring students to answer questions. I'll let her tell a little bit about herself.
I'm actually a Big Ben alumni. I came here in 2001. I actually graduated with my AAMBA from the University of Great City, if you can imagine. So you belong to Cape, nineteen eleven. I come from the state of L. Exity Park. I used to interact with different people. They sort of like translated people into their Spanish. So I'm actually glad to be back in my community and help students.
Excellent. Welcome back. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, sort of.
How's your team?
But we hired a new director by team. He started on October first, but he said his commission means for this one. And in November he'll be in a dream. So I don't know, maybe in 2020.
His name?
Patrick Steele. He comes from North of the Bronx.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone. So on the consent agenda, before I look for a motion to approve, under item H, enrollment report, Star Burner, I believe you have a correction to share?
The discrepancy. The data that you have for the summer finals in the spreadsheet is accurate, but I had an error in the written-up consent agenda items. So those, the decreases you see stated there from last summer are wrong. There actually is a bad mistake because those decreases are not actually there. We increased this summer. We ended a little bit higher than we were last summer in headcount and total FTE. And we were just down one percent within that timeframe for state FTE. So I just wanted to draw your attention, if you notice that discrepancy between what I wrote and the spreadsheet that was attached. Any questions?
Since you mentioned that the state FTE is on a roll in three years or something, so will our state FTE allocation be dropped or remain basically the same?
I don't know what. These guys handle that question. Because the whole state is down, we're not seeing anything yet. Because, you know, they know how to redistribute money, but they don't know how to take it away and redistribute it. Give it back, so.
Yeah, even though we're down a little bit, we're not as down as much as other schools. So it's protecting us that we're maintaining or minimizing the loss.
I was just gonna say, yeah, I think it's the operative word.
Oh, yes.
Yet is, is I think the operative word in what Linda said, we don't. We're still very attuned to what's happening with our enrollment and concerned about. Not wanting to continue to see erosion there because at some point it will catch up. It's a potential, so we'll catch up with it.
We're headed into a recession.
Right.
I'm just cheering for the recession.
Yes.
Wonderful. Workforce.
Yes.
Thank you. Also, I would like your guidance, I don't know if we need to pull it, but with regard to item K, E six, inclusion in climate plan. We would like to have a discussion about that plan because there hasn't been much update to the trustees other than what we participated in at the faculty breakfast. Kim Garza is willing to address that under her Vice President Human Resources Labor Report. So just know that we can approve it now on the consent agenda, but we will talk about it. That Kim's report.
I'm moving to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we'll move to remarks. We do not have an ASB representative today, nor a classified staff representative. So that brings us to the Faculty Association. And Don, it looks like we get the task today. Okay. Thank you. Vice President Finance and Administration, Linda.
Hey, just. So just some updates to what I had put in the consent agenda. The very first section, the CTC make update, I stated we were at twenty-eight percent completion. We're at thirty-three. We went up five since I put this information in. Our current start date for implementation is still set for March of 2020. But our go-live date has now moved from February of twenty-one to October of twenty-four. And that can still change. It depends on what happens with implement group three and implement four. The audit update, I'm waiting for the state auditor's office to respond to my response to their latest questions. And the infrastructure project, the gentleman is on campus right now. And that's why Shar might leave early so that she can help him finish and get off campus today. I agree. Weck, nothing has changed there. That's still the same. Stucco repair actually started on Saturday. We were out here actually saying last thing on Saturday. And for the Wallenstein review, the architect from DE, that DES contracted with was actually here on Tuesday. And so we did a walk along, and he took lots of photos. And then we went over and we took plans out of the drawer and. Wrecked some wonderful things up for us and give us a laundry list and tell us how much dog has cost.
And demolition has begun.
Oh, and demo. So half the building, I believe, is gone right now.
Everything working well so far in the way?
So far. I mean, we have some temperature issues, cold and hot. I don't think we've had any electrical issues or anything like that. We still are closing and locking the doors on Fridays. So only the three permanent full-time faculty are in, no students and no wanderers through. So that the contractors can get in there and make lots of noise and lots of dust and.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for that. So that brings us to Vice President Learning and Student Success, Dr. Bryce Humphrey.
So just a couple of updates from the consent agenda. One in regards to accreditation, as I mentioned in the consent agenda. We are moving forward with addressing the new accreditation standards. And where we are right now is we are, the assignments out to. Staff within the organization to look at those standards that pertain to their particular areas. And identify those things such as policies and procedures that may need, that may need to be updated there. Going to take some time to do. So. In preparing for the visit, we have to write a report and have documented evidence to show that we're doing what we say we're doing to meet those standards. And if there's something like a policy that takes a few months to get vetted and approved, that's not something we can start next spring right before we submit the report. So we want to identify those things that are going to take time to update or create. So that we allow ourselves as much time as possible to do those things to be prepared for the visit. So that's, that's our focus right now is identifying those things that we need to change or update or create to be compliant with standards and policies and procedures. The other thing is, there is a training that the commission is putting on. Third week of November. There are four of us who are attending the annual Northwest Commission meetings. And they have a. They have another. Unique training that is for chairs of accreditation visits that I've been invited to attend as well. So it's not all about either those who are chairing visits. And so they will be specifically, doing some civic training on how to conduct visits using the new standards. And so looking forward to learning, hopefully learning a great opening. And then I'll be doing a site visit. Next week, but also next spring. And I don't know yet, the school that I'm visiting in the spring, if they're going to address the newer, the old standards, hopefully the new ones. Because again, that will be very important for us. As I. Moving on from accreditations, I indicated, yes, sorry.
And I'm, I don't know if this is an appropriate question or not, but looking at, you know, what was in the consent agenda, it says, one of the things is raising the relationship of all the institution activities to its purposes. Is there something that we as a board should be more focused on to make sure that we are aligning our activities? How are we involved in that, I guess, part of the question? And then the second bullet was providing a sound basis for institutional planning and improvement. How are we involved in that, the board?
So. In regards to your, to your first question. The. Lack, I guess, that this we just spoke about. So the way that, what we have learned from the commission about how they're going to conduct the sta, the visits moving forward is they're really going to focus on. Continuous improvement and planning process. So they've distilled everything down into two standards. Standard two is a compliance type of standard refers to a lot of things that the department does, says thou shalt do this or that. So it's really a checklist. Yes, we do this. And if you don't, then. Then we're, they're not happy with this until we prove that we are. And so we, we have to comply with those things. And. And so in the report, we'll show that we comply with all of those things in standard two. Standard one is all about institutional planning, continuous improvement. And that's what they, that's what they want us to spend more pages on the report on. And that's what they want us to, that's what the focus of the visit will be next fall. And so they really want to see what are we doing to. To reduce student equity gaps, to learn about, to assess how we're doing in facilitating student learning. And how, and learning from our assessment to make, and making improvements from that and allocating resources accordingly. So. And those are, those are general concepts. But the work that we've been doing as an institution to improve in our assessment and planning processes and connecting the dots. Really critical that we continue that and show how we're, how we're. Engage network to guide what we're doing. For with board. When you were doing your self-evaluation, I think there was some really good discussion about trying to make it meaningful. And tying it back to those strategic. Goals or things that the board wanted to accomplish. And so. Based on what I know right now. I think the most important thing for you as a board would be. One, really looking critically at your self-evaluation process. And how you see your role in the, in the planning, strategic planning process of college. To be embarking on a new strategic plan. And so thinking about your role relative to that. And we. We know that core themes is not a requirement anymore. We've had discussions about how we simplify our planning process. And so thoughts and ideas about that and how we can streamline that is. We'll have, we'll be having more conversations about that. Thinking about that and your involvement there, I think is important. As, as you look at. The search for a new president, then thinking about the type of president that, that you want to have. And how, what you expect of immigrant leading that, that continuous improvement planning process. And how you call that out in the job description. And because this, you know, wearing an accreditation hat, it'll certainly be critical that the, that the new president understands. The importance of that, understand how to operate a continuous improvement planning process, be best and be able to lead that. So. I mean, based on what I know right now, I think those are some things that we want for the.
And of course, we're looking through the policy government's limbs and is there a policy that would help support the continuous improvement model? Or is it something, could do help that or not? And I don't know.
So we're.
If that's for us to answer more than you.
Well, we're going, as I said, we're going through and looking at the standards and the policies and procedures related to them. And so it, it may be, I don't know yet, we haven't finished that process. It may be that we come back to you and say, we need to update this, this board policy to better align with the new standards. But. We have.
It's ongoing on the process.
And then to the board, I think it's helpful, the work that you do in terms of. The presentation of, and your review of the monitoring reports. Bryce, we talked about the. Success gaps and things like that, that you're, you're. There's a record that you are paying attention to those reports, that you're, you have expectations for the president, the administration to close those gaps. That's important too.
Any other comments on the accreditation stuff? Thank you. So I, as I mentioned in study session. This, the governing board or the state board is meeting in Centralia. And yesterday I was there with Barry Guerin. And we presented the statement of the document for our classes of five, science and five management. And we might think state board to be supportive of that. And so we are excited about that opportunity. I'll be convening a group of faculty to lead that effort. The next step is creating a program proposal, all the details of what, how we would implement the program. We, our intent would be to have that done by. This next summer, so we submit that out to the state board. It goes through a review process and needs to be approved by the state board as well. So we have twelve months from, yes, this, we have the October meeting next year. We want to have their program proposal to the state board, secure their approval. And then we would have the duration of next year to. Finish putting place the pieces for that, for the program recruiting students. And hoping for a fall 2021 start for that. So. Any comments or questions?
You've done great work to get to this moment. But congratulations on that.
Thank you.
There are ways to go, but big deal for Big Ben.
It's, it's a huge deal for Big Ben and certainly we've had some folks that have done great work and been to us to this point. And a lot more great work coming up. The last thing that I wanted to mention is, as you know, advising has, has been. A major push for the college and really a strategy to work, hopefully will help close some of those equity gaps. And we're doing a great deal of work around advising. We've heard a little bit about this, Starfish, which is a software package that the STEM grant. Trump is directing, Columbia campus is directing and purchasing that software. We have teams of some faculty and staff that are actively engaged in pulling that together. And one of the. One of the. Real benefits of that is, is it's, in order to put this together, it's forcing us to have some really good conversations about. About process and roles and responsibilities of different types of employees or employee groups to. We have to clarify so we can build the parameters within the software such that they can deliver those services to students. And so that process in itself has been very beneficial. And we are. Working to get all the parts and pieces in place that we could start. Pilots with the new software in, in a quarter. And the benefit of this is it will help us track students, do really alerts, communicate with them about any of it. Advisor, a case manager that's responsible for a group of students. This will facilitate the managing that caseload, if you will, so you don't have a. Bunch of sheets of paper or an Excel spreadsheet where you're trying to track and. Track students that way. So it's a much more dynamic system that will help facilitate a support and assistance.
Any questions for Bryce? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice President Human Resources and Labor, Kim Garza.
Okay, so we were quite busy over the summer. Yes, and I, I will give a shout out to every person who served on the screening committee. There were many people who served on multiple committees and we had some searches. There were many people who served on multiple committees and we had some searches that we had to do several times. So everybody really came together and helped us fill all the positions that we had. So I wanted to let you know that the IST instructor, Reza Sharifi, is scheduled to begin work on December 2nd. He's coming to us from Johnson Controls in Missouri and will be moving up here so he can begin teaching in which a quarter. And Ethan Tonamaker was selected as our agriculture program coordinator, so he's been the assistant operations director for Tonamaker Farms in Royal City and we're very excited. He actually starts on October 16th. So and then we have not posted, you know, any of these positions yet, but we are starting to get requisitions for our open instructor positions and some other things. So we have a little bit of some breathing space and then it will kind of wrap up. Couple of things that I wanted to.
And there's a, it says there's an opening for a music instructor.
Yes.
So what's his Michael?
Michael Zabinski turned in his resignation in August.
He didn't accept it?
Well, so he, Michael accepted a position with the O'Fellow School District. Michael recently received, I think, a second master's degree in instructional technology, Donnie Helpney, I think that's right. And so he really wanted an opportunity to put that to use and so he is doing that. He's working in that type of position down at O'Fellow and he is also then has some opportunity to finish up his doctorate, which he's been working on. And he is still teaching a couple of classes for us as an adjunct instructor, but we are in need of a full time person. So so we are hoping to kick that search off along with a couple other instruction positions this fall quarter. We're trying to position everything so everybody has an opportunity to serve on the committees, but that we're not butting up against the president committees and so. So I did want to, so just to let you know, we are working on our response to the civil rights audit that we had earlier in the year. So I've had meetings with each of the kind of area, what I would call subject matter experts to get their what their plan is and I believe I got my first response back on a couple of things today. So we will have that off to the state board by the deadline of November 4th. And with regard to kind of the classified staff representation, so Robin has been the classified staff or the STAR committee chair for off and on for the last few years and she kind of respectfully asked if she could step down from that position earlier this summer. And so the volume of work in her position is such that she didn't feel that she could continue to serve in that capacity. We also had a number of members of that committee who accepted promotions to administrative positions. So the committee is in a little bit of a holding pattern. We're not quite sure how to move forward. I will say that we do have classified staff who have expressed interest in participating on some of some other committees that we have going on, which are part of the campus climate action plan. And so the primary work of the STAR committee has been training and recognition. That's been their focus and some of those pieces are getting picked up through some other work that's being done. So we do have classified staff that are interested in serving on committees and work groups and are doing so. And so I don't I don't want you to have the impression that they're not participating. We they are. I would also say that we do have quite a few folks, not just classified staff, but administrative as well as faculty, who are who are struggling with the volume of work and service to the campus community. And so that does affect, you know, how people choose to spend their time. So so I just wanted you to to be kind of aware of that, that we do have classified staff who are serving. Robin and I talked a little bit about what what they're thinking today. She shared with me that she had received positive feedback about some upcoming training that we're doing that, and I can go into that in more detail, about the opportunity for classified staff to have some access to some leadership development training and that there was positive comments about the steps that the college has taken so far towards making changes in in the climate and can talk about that a little more. So do you have any questions about classified staff?
One thing I'd like to certainly say.
Yes.
I think that it's important that the employee groups have a voice here in front of the board of trustees and want to make sure that we continue to provide that opportunity to the classified staff in some manner so that they're aware that they're welcome and invited and encouraged to come here and give us updates about their division of the campus community. I think it's important to keep the trustees aware and I have enjoyed over the years the fact that all the groups are here and present to report to us, so I don't want that to be lost.
Yeah, and I think I would say for those of us on cabinet and executive team, we would we would agree with that. We don't want to lose that either. It really is, you know, it is challenging because for some, you know, for many of our staff, their workloads are compressed into 40 hours and and they're they're struggling to find a work-life balance as most folks are. So I think it's something that we can certainly talk about and figure out, all right, how can we share with them this the opportunity and that we don't want to lose that voice and come up with a mechanism by which they can share their views without feeling like they have to set aside their work and come here or get behind it.
Even if there are written reports, please continue to be represented in the consent agenda so that it wasn't not represented. Any thoughts?
No, I would I would agree with that, you know, rather than spending the whole meeting time here where they could be working just that that written opportunity.
Okay, that's good.
Share their voice so they can have that level of engagement.
Absolutely. Okay. So as far as I kind of alluded to a little bit on the campus climate, that we had some classified staff that are serving on some work groups that we put together. And so I guess before I start, how much context do you want me to give you?
So I think since the campus climate action plan was rolled out, discussed at the faculty breakfast, do you think it might be good for a sort of a general status update for the trustees and then to the specific points that you have if you'd like to?
So so we did get the actual plan posted on the portal, so all employees have had an opportunity to see that if they wish to. Cabinet is working on kind of the accompanying calendar and assignments, so we're still kind of hashing that out as to, so what's the deadline for this task and and so on and who's going to be the primary person responsible for that. But but we did kick off three committees or work groups. So one is workplace norms. So that group is really focused on the accountability theme and coming together to come up with some standard workplace norms for at the team staff at Big Ben. We have a group that is solely focused on onboarding and orientation because we have struggled with that. And so there's been quite a bit of interest in that one as well as a leadership kind of development group. So that group is focused more on the training side aspect and they had a really positive meeting yesterday, so they're very excited about the things that are going on. So Valerie Parton and Fabiola Barbosa are leading the workplace norms group. Tammy Napianik is leading the onboarding and orientation and then Leanne Parton is leading the leadership development group. And I think we've had, you know, not, you know, we didn't have hundreds of people sign up for each thing, but we had a good response and I think as people see some successes, there may be some more interest that is generated. But there's definitely a core group for each area and they seem to be excited about about the opportunity to create some change. We did, we are scheduled to have Michael Nash. So Michael Nash is a consultant that is based out of Leavenworth and he does a lot of leadership training. He's been speaking at a number of events throughout the state and he works with different organizations. So he is, and actually Beth Laslow has done some work with him. She's brought him in as a consultant in some of her C-Biz work with industry. So he is coming to campus on December 17th, 18th, and 19th. And all of our full time admin exam and classified staff will have an opportunity to spend an eight hour training session with him and that will go over team building, communications, personality styles, things that people can use on the job as well as in their personal life. So that's where some of we've gotten some excitement over that. And so that's one of the things that we've done so far. We've also kind of kicked off or started formulating our template for being able to take things that are coming out of meetings like cabinet and shared governance and giving supervisors talking points so that they can go back into their departments and have intentional conversations to communicate or share information with their staff so that there is a really, I think, well thought out kind of plan to get information trickled down throughout the organization. Let's see, we've had, I think the bulk of our cabinet group have completed what we call leader user guides and those are posted out on our portal. And so the intent of those is to give primarily new folks, but you know, existing folks, a little bit of information about leaders or supervisors. So I'll use myself as as an example. So I put things in there about my personality style, you know, my Myers-Briggs inventory that I'm really not worth anything before 9:00 AM in the morning, so if you need a decision, you need to wait till after that to talk to me. A little bit about our our personal kind of families, trying to say, here's what you might want to know if you work for me or you're going to do business with me, that maybe I like to do business by email versus face to face, things like that, that people can learn and put to good use without having, you know, without having to ask or be uncomfortable. So we've done those, those are out on the portal. And I think we'll see what the reaction is to those, but they they're just another way for people to get to know their supervisor or leader in the organization. We worked on the template, we've done a couple of kind of community events with Ice Cream Social and some other pieces and I'm trying to think if I forgot anything. I feel like I forgot a bunch, but did I get everything? That's not just because you tired of it. So I guess what questions can can I or any of us can be answering?
Is is the feedback strong that this action plan, you know, is being accepted and and folks are engaged?
So I think that depends on what you thought about the organization prior to that. So, you know, I did have a staff member stop me in the hallway one day and said, you know, I read that and I really saw things that I shared with you reflected in that and so I appreciate being heard. Certainly there are other folks who have a little bit more of a cautious or pessimistic view. You know, there are folks who've said, you know, you're only doing this because of the report. And I mentioned at our shared governance meeting, yes, we are doing this because you got feedback and we are trying. It doesn't mean that everything in that plan is going to work, that it's that it would work well, that it's written well, but it is a place to start. And I would hope that as leaders, we would go out gathering feedback on the things that we're doing so that we can tweak each thing. And I would hope that people would be comfortable enough with us to give us feedback to say, hey, this is not a winner and maybe you might want to think about that or here's how this landed or if you could include this. There's been some discussion at SEED about how how can SEED be a support group to help each of the work groups figure out how to infuse elements of equity, inclusion, and diversity into each of those areas, onboarding and orientation, leadership, communication, which I think is great. So the more that there is communication across the campus, the more progress we're going to make. If everybody hunkers down into their, you know, whatever their perspective is, then we're not going to make very much progress. I'm hopeful.
How do you measure them?
Oh, that's the piece I forgot. And I could write it down. So we did Matt, reached out to four or five different organizations, companies that do employee engagement surveys and we have some initial information back. We're going to put that in a matrix and cabinet is going to look at that and try to come up with a way to figure out how to narrow that down because we would like to enter into a relationship with a vendor so that we can do regular employee engagement surveys, whether that's once a year or every other year. We want to be able to get that feedback on a regular basis and incorporate that into how we're doing this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Given the elsewhere? Executive Director of Big Ben Community College Foundation, Leanne Porter.
So we'll start with the campaign. So we are at $2,792,287, just right under 75% of our goal right now. So we have made 130 asks, we have 65 pledges, 38 no's, but at least a no is better than just don't answer the phone. We're waiting to hear back from some others. We've submitted a few grants. We're waiting for a few of those to hear back. We're also applying for grants again. We got a couple of no's and we're going to apply again and see if we can get a yes. And so and we're meeting with people that said, come back next year. You know, it wasn't a good year last year, so come back. So we've started that again. And so I didn't get to count them. It's like I should be able to count them if I come back again. But we're making the rounds again. On scholarships, we have awarded so far $252,000 to $253,000. And we still have, we're holding back over $18,000 from Microsoft, $60,000 for the cohort at Stars Winter and for some of the testing fees. And then we have a Biella Foundation that gives $10,000 to every single one of the 34 community colleges in the state. And I hold that till winter and spring, just because it gets such a flood of money in the fall, sometimes we are seeing that they could use an application for the last two quarters. Jennifer, Chandler and I just attended our case conference, which is our national conference in San Diego. That was last week. It was a great conference and we all learned a lot. Chandler gave alumni, Jennifer gave a lot of scholarships and I gave a lot of major gifts and different things like that, so I'm excited and confident. As foundation directors in the state, we try and meet twice a year and we're becoming, I guess, a little bit more organized the longer we've been doing that. And so we've started an executive committee. So there's five of us that are meeting to start to plan agendas for upcoming meetings. And I am serving on that as well as working on strategies to have some of our, some of my counterparts don't have Aspen relationship with their president or they report to a vice president instead of a president. So we're working on some strategies to try and improve those relationships. And we're also working on the possibility of doing a statewide fundraiser. Maybe that would be emergency funding for the entire state and we'll find that out. So a little bit more aggressive on how we're going to move forward is we do a lot of education and a lot of networking when we meet. It's been really beneficial. And then as Kim mentioned, I'm heading up And then, as Kim mentioned, I'm heading up the leadership work group and we did meet yesterday. We had six of us that attended the first meeting and it was a great meeting. So, we, so we worked on our goal setting for them to come about for that committee, how often we're going to meet. So, we meet every three weeks. We worked on different ways that the team wants to communicate. We did things like that and how we wanted, after Michael Nash comes, there's only a couple of us that have gone to Michael Nash trainings. So, after that, they'll kind of flush out, so we're going to move forward with more trainings. But it was, it's a great group. I'm hoping we get a few more. It was a great start.
Excellent. Star Night coming?
Star Night, oh my gosh, yeah, it's a busy month. So, Star Night is coming and then the campaign. So, yeah, Star Night's coming, yeah.
Any questions for me?
Free time.
Let's go back to Faculty Association President, Salav Aben.
Good afternoon, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
We have had a pretty active faculty. I think we're all still doing the swim things. Michelle Reeves, our new elementary education, I believe, was faculty. She has been attending several workshops. She attended one for best practices for iBest. And she's meeting with part-time instructors that can pre-plan and place in the ground work for some iBest courses this spring. She also attended a two-day conference with SBCC, the State Board, and, or that they put on for new faculty. And she learned a number of strategies to create more transparent assignments and assessments, which in turn creates greater dignity classroom. And she credited it as one of the better professional developments she's attended in some time. Jennifer McCarthy, as always, is hard at work in German this year. This is a German year. And she credits her students with being enthusiastic and motivated. And she said, for the first time in my 12 years at Big Ben, a small group of students in my class self-organized to form a weekly study group that meets in the library on Thursday after their instructor's German and help each other with class content. And she credited their level of commitment and said it was heartwarming and said that you would agree that, or hopefully would agree that it speaks very highly of the group of students. I think so too. Sarah Bauer is piloting a newish course, Chemical Concepts. Come, ah, Chemical Concepts with a lab this quarter. Not sure why that was so hard for me to say. It's a hybrid course with book instruction and they're working in a lot of new and fundamental modalities. In particular, the lab is done by students purchasing a specific kit. The chemistry department has been working with these sort of kits that students can use in conjunction with online videos so that they can actually do science from home. And it's actually, I've seen a little bit of it and it's really fascinating. It's quite interesting to watch and it's interesting to see how these things line up. And I thought it was really cool. And so, they complete the labs in their own homes and submit their work online. And their hope is to be able to offer some fully online chemistry courses in the near future and increase offerings to lab science. Incidentally, I and Donnie Urnett have been hard at work in getting the faculty portion of the Presidential Search Advisory Committee going. We have someone for the transfer side. We're still recruiting for someone from Proftech and you'll first know when we finally get someone who steps up.
Good. We'd like that list, that whole roster to be committed at our November 14th meeting.
That, I don't believe that will be a problem. Thank you.
Any have any questions for Salav?
Yes, of course.
Valtini, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Just one thing about Sarah Bauer's chemistry concept course.
It's catchy.
This is a new course to help students who are not majoring in chemistry or preparing for allied health. And what we had in the curriculum before was rather limited. And if you were trying to satisfy a lab, science lab course and you took the, one of those, you ended up maybe getting a lot more than you were prepared to get. And so, you know, it would not lend itself to the success of the students or to fulfillment of their path that, you know, other than satisfying some lab requirements. And so, it's a, it's a change in curriculum, but it's more tailored to help students be successful while mastering lab concepts and curriculum. So, it's, you know, I think Sarah's found it to be very energizing and she seems to be very excited about the work of doing a new course.
And the work she and Louie are doing is just excellent. It's, it certainly blows me away and I, and I work in their building. So, yeah, it's really something.
They're good. Thank you. Item six is exceptional faculty or report.
So, we have a report from Scott Wood, who is a prior recipient of exceptional faculty board.
Prior recipient? Yeah, from last quarter or last year, yes. Great. Thanks for having me. This is a great honor and it was a great opportunity to be the, to be someone giving this award. And I'm trying to be quick, little background first. I'm a poet. I'm an MFA in poetry. Over the last 20 or 30 years, the world of poetry has changed a lot from what folks might have experienced in the past. The world of poetry now is massive. There are, there's a huge number of new voices out there in the world. There's a huge number of new ways to get into poetry. There are as many ways to do poetry now as there are individuals. And this is great because it increases the amount of representation that our students have in an art that is very important for critical thinking and making progress in all kinds of different areas on the job and in school. But it also, it also causes problems for access down the road because with this increase in ways and methods and voices, it also kind of adds problems for access. And so, one of the problems I see in my classes a lot is connecting with poetry and with, connecting with contemporary poetry in particular. A lot of my students come to my class having already experienced poetry from ages ago when they fought to struggle to pay attention to it or to write something about it. So, when I teach my 102 class, this is the class that what I did actually probably matters the most for, is to increase their access and show them an open door when it comes to poetry and use that to increase their critical thinking skills and their access to other parts of literature. Now, what I did in particular was also designed to help me learn about this new ramification, this new thing called the project book. The project book is a way that poets in the last 20 or 15 years have started to write books of poems. So, that a book of poems is actually more than just a collection of them like it was in the past. Now, people are really, really going after trying to write, well, Robert Frost said that if a book of poems is 24 poems, the book is the 25th poem. And people are really trying to write books of poems as if it were a single poem. And when my students encounter contemporary poetry and they find a poem they really love and then they go buy that poet's book, they might get confused when they hit that project book and realize that it's being written as a big-picture thing. There's more synthesis to do than just getting into that one poem. So, what I did, and all this stuff happened after, really started rising after I got my degree. And so, now I'm turning back to writing my own project book. So, what I did is I did an online workshop with the Province Town Fine Arts Center, you know, the workshop in Province Town, Mass, Massachusetts, Province Town? Yeah, New England, thank you. Anyway, it's an online community. We did, we read four books of poems that are project books that fit this new mode that we hashed out. A bunch of professional poets like myself. We hashed out strategies and we tried to steal tips and all that stuff from it. We discussed our books and our manuscripts that we're working on currently. And I'm happy to report that just last week I found out that some of the poems that I've been working on for this manuscript have been accepted in a quarterly journal that's published in Utah. It's called Weber of the Contemporary West. My book's about some time I worked on in Rancho Colorado years ago. But anyway, I'm happy to report that some of the stuff I did actually paid up. So, this is amazing. Thank you very much. And I'll pass out some poems that I brought from the books that we worked on. My students are going to benefit and I'll pass these around for you all to maybe have some homework. So, thank you very much. And while they're going around, please ask me any questions you need to.
Justine, do you have any questions? Dr. Lee didn't give a presentation.
I do. Thank you very much.
Don't go far.
Oh, whoops, I'm sorry. Definitely want this, Scott. Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, you want me to? Thank you very much. Dr. Lee, we have three WAC revisions for you.
We have, these are revisions that Jason Brown suggested. And I believe they're for either housekeeping or clarification or both purposes. Is that fair to characterize them? Okay. So, this is an action item. You've seen these before. And I recommend approval of the proposed revisions to the WAC for trespass, brief adjudicative procedures, and disciplinary action.
And those need individual actions, please. Okay? So, I would entertain a motion, please, to approve the revisions to the WAC for trespass.
I still have a moment.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We now need a motion to approve the revisions to the brief adjudicative procedures. So, a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And then, finally, we need a motion to approve the revisions for the WAC with regard to disciplinary action. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just lost my way. Oh, number eight is the 2019-2020 proprietary budget.
Right. The very first one was for the associated student body. And you have actuals for the last three years and a projection for this year. And when you look at the differences between revenue and expenses for just the ASP portion on the top, you'll notice in a couple of, the first two earlier years, their expenses were a little bit higher than their revenue and that just happened to be because they were spending some savings if they had to do some more primitive things. So, we always set the budget to balance, not thinking that they're going to have extra funds, that they'll spend everything they have. That's not always the case. You see last year, they gained about $7,000 between the revenue and their expenses, but they spent a little bit more out of their year-ending balance. So, projected balance for 1920 shows an increase even though the revenue and expenses are the same and that's because they get interest. The clubs balance, they're still, they are also still carrying a balance and they try to spend real close to what it is that they take in, whatever the fundraising. And some years that they raise more, one particular year because of the year down the road, they're going to do something to pay back. Currently also, the bulk of the funding is coming from the SNAP and that is just being derived from tuition and ready to start. But we have a couple of other programs that are also contracted. One of those, Doris, and is growing and looking at tapping into a little bit back to contribute to SNAP too because these students are awesome. Any questions on the ASP or club portion? Next budget would be athletics. And as you can see, they had a balance in 1617, which was reduced in 1718, and then a little under the weather for 1819. We were sort of expecting that. This year, we hope not to expect that. They are doing more fundraising activities. They've done some facility rentals. This, last year, we just had the Air Force here in April and that's where the 20,000 came from in 1819. And then, in September, we did some food service, which doesn't show up in the bill portion. Food service for another contingent, Mobility Guardian, that's what they call it, another court activity with the military. And we rented shower facilities, so the athletics department arranged showers. We are sharing a portion of what wrestling team members bring in and we're discussing sharing a portion of the extra FTEs that athletics brings in over the 1718 level of state-supported FTEs. They're saving our maintenance money there, keeping our state FTE count up.
What is internal transfer?
149, that's tuition, so moving the tuition from one place to another, moving it into the athletic fund, sits in five.
Does it hire an athlete in our career? Doesn't look like the salaries have gone up that much in the full-time athletic.
That is correct because we have, it was always getting shown, the expenditure was always being shown in here even though it was kind of 149 because it's attached to the athletics, to the portion of what we're getting.
Do you have their expense that we talked about sometime was refinancing for, has that been resolved?
No, that is on our budget request list. We were still sitting in the quarter with a meeting for that. So, we have that and a bus. The bus is what, 40 years old? In fact, this month, we had no bus driver because we had the potato discussion today. These are driving potato trucks to make more money this month. So, we're actually using commercial circles.
Does a bus cost?
Well, it depends. It depends on you want, you are youth or what model, but it can range from $75,000 to $215,000. And for us, this last year, the difficulty is spend, finding some things right for us.
And SNAP, remind me again?
Student activity fee, so every student pays into that after some.
Can you explain how the tuition fees and the tuition waivers, how those are included in this proprietary budget?
Because it's required that we show the full income and the full expenses. So, we are showing, here is the student who comes and without this student, we wouldn't have the state FTE and we wouldn't have the tuition. So, we're showing the tuition. But then, on the flip side, we're also showing, okay, so the student was attacked with, let's just say, $1,000 in tuition, but they received a waiver that was worth $360. So, we're showing the full 1,000 and then the waiver even though it's not cash.
And then, on the scholarship, so what revenues are supporting those scholarships?
That's still coming out of that ASP. The SNAP that comes in.
Any other question?
Bookstore. So, the bookstore, as we talked about previously, has been losing money because people are getting their books in other methods, they're renting them, they're having them on their phone. We did this last year, reduced our personnel in the bookstore. So you'll notice our predictive loss has happened for we. We've also reduced some of our hours. And we're trying to look at innovative ways for cutting some of the expenditures. We've also started offering, it's a ministry line up, but we started offering coffee on Fridays when the cafeteria is closed. I met with Barnes &amp; Noble, and they won't touch us because we don't do 800 grand or more. We do have a new program coming out. They have sent me some information about strictly online books. So we would take the orders that would be delivered to the store and the students. Getting harder and harder for books.
Any questions?
Housing and food. So we'll start with food. Again, another losing proposition. Cafeteria doesn't make money. Catering does. We're not seeing as much catering events as we have in the past. That has fallen off. Whether that's due to taste. And I don't necessarily mean just the taste of food. I mean taste of a company, the renter who's coming, whether they want to be obligated to use ours or someone else's. So we've started a campus food service work group. We've met, we've talked about various options. We don't want to have nothing, but we also don't want to continue to lose our shirt every year. While there's still money sitting in that fund, that fund is part of the reserves that we have to hold on to. So even though you look at it and you go, oh, well, we could last, you know, six or seven more years absorbing the loss that we're absorbing. But that's not a very that's not a very financially sound way to move forward. So we've got people researching, is it possible that Millionaire out at American Airport would be interested in doing something? How about chocolate? They go extra meals and allow us to come up and deliver them. And we have a food truck rally once a week. Would some of the downtown restaurants be interested in coming up here once a week, taking turns serving soup and salads or whatever their specialty is prepackaged? Do we do more microwave meals in the bookstore that people sold? You know, what's the option? Sedexo has been on campus since. So they started out as Marriott International and then went to Sedexo with an H, and then Sedexo without the H. Restaurant availability, students, what they expect. I mean, all of that has changed over the last four decades. So what is it we do need to provide? What should we, as a campus, be responsible for to provide? I did a little map and I think by 65,000 shoes were in one place.
Our other colleagues experiencing, I would imagine the bookstore is pretty common theme.
Yes.
Just because of technology.
It's a food show.
Also.
Services. And so when you go out for a request or proposal, you're not getting anybody because they see, you're supplying them with your records. And so they've seen that it's a losing proposition. And unless they can bring in that catering. So for Sedexo, the kind of operation they run, so they have a management contract with us. So right off the bat, just to open the door, it's like, they don't do anything inside. Then they have to pay the folks that live here. They have to buy the product. They're buying, we're buying the product from Sedexo, so Sedexo is making money there. So they're not losing anything to be here. But we're the ones that are paying for it to happen. So is it worth it to the campus for us to fork out 70, 80, $90,000 a year just to have somebody here? So they have an exclusive catering contract. If we didn't have the exclusive catering contract, would we be able to bring more groups in? Because they can have personal preference, whoever they cater, run the catering kitchen. Suggestion to maybe let's start a culinary program will never be expensive. And where would our students go? I mean, generally, our students like to stay in uni. You don't have that many restaurants where they do go.
I do know some of the organizations that I've involved in, that when they talk about their own special events and using our facilities, that that is a barrier for them because they can't bring a caterer of their choice.
Is is Sedexo our only option?
We certainly put out the R and P, but they did this 2006, I think, back after R and P and Sedexo.
Yeah, that 3,000 dollar loss to help us in recruiting a new vendor.
A couple of the West Side schools that run along High Five have moved to Coman Avanti program. And it's, a room is set up and it's kind of on your honor. And the company watches you with the camera to see if you're actually paying for the product. It's all prepackaged, refrigerated or something you can microwave. And it's more fresh, so it's not like the frozen microwave. But we don't have a vendor like that.
Maybe Amazon and Whole Foods could help with grab and go. I mean, there's something along that line, because you're starting to see that more and more.
The franchise has been thrown out. Well, I would hate to do that in the short term without knowing what we're going to get with folks here on campus. As it is now, it's breakfast and lunch. And most of our residence hall students don't come over here to eat.
And we've created the food pantry, so we have that as a supporting tool to all of our students. That probably also has some impact on actual sales.
And I do, I do see a lot of folks over there at lunchtime, but they aren't all eating. They're bringing their food, they're not offering.
And I think just to clarify, the food pantry, I believe students have to be eligible for their services. It's not.
No, we don't ask.
Oh, we don't?
No.
Oh, okay. So it could be a competitor then to our foods.
Yeah, and they did recently just start doing some kind of grab and go meal, that they've started keeping at the library. So you just have to.
There been a challenge for you ahead?
Yes.
Any questions around that?
I will say one more thing. So it's kind of, I view it kind of like, hey, so we all love the 7-Eleven on the corner. Because we knew it was there. And we knew 365 days, 24 hours, seven days a week, we could go down there. But how many have ever won? I mean, I had that situation when I lived on the West Side. You know, I was in the house for 19 years, and I never once went down to the corner. But you tell me they were going to close, and I'd be thinking. So it's kind of the same thing. I mean, I don't want to lose that lot here, but on the other hand, I never used it.
But one of the things, when you talk about the 7-Eleven model, having been over in the Pacific Rim and Japan, 7-Eleven model looks different there. And they have a substantial section of their store that's fresh food, packaged, grab and go. You know, not just the hot dogs and the slurpees. And maybe there is some path to something like that, that is more self-serve and less full serve.
But again, it's part of, we are, we are basically a commuter college. I mean, we do have some residence halls, but you know, all of those kinds of.
Yeah.
So people are driving on campus to get their food and coming home. So on the housing side, we're doing well on the housing side. Back in 1617 was the big furniture push. We've done some smaller things in 1718, 1819, we hardly did anything. Probably going to do a little bit more in 1920 because we're replacing doorknobs to door handles to be more accessible. We did take out a water fountain and put in a water bottle dispenser. And they said, wow, that is really improved the recycling plastic bottles over there. And then probably some more washers and dryers. And so the year before last, we bought a non-commercial LG from Costco, front-loading washer and dryer. I love Costco, sorry. Front-loading washer and dryer so that it would be accessible. And because they are extra large, the students just love those two machines. So they're going like 24/7. So a couple of our speed queens have started to wear out, and we wanted to help them. And they are expensive, but they've lasted. Great. I did the red ones fix.
Sort of coin-operated or free?
No, they are not coin-operated. That decision was made before I got here and have no desire to change that. So the residence halls, we have been over there lately. I mean, they're, you know, old Air Force barracks, and they are dank-style showers. And they're not, you know, they're not the new slick, you know, pretty kind of thing, a lot of cement and no elevators, cement stairs. We've done some things with furniture and a little bit of paint, a little lipstick on the paint. But they're inexpensive, and that's what our students. So we do do free.
How do we get mine to that way?
That way?
Hell, we just.
So our accessibility is all on the first floor in one building.
And what is the cost for students to stay?
I want to say it's 1060 or 1160 for a quarter. And 960, yeah, so about 330 a month. And then we prorate during the summer.
Okay, the question's better.
Okay, and so then the last page is our cash balances report. We've done that for a couple of years now. So we pick a point in time at the very end of the previous June, so June 30th of 2019, which is the 1819 year. We list all the cash, all the short-term money that we hope to collect, all the short-term liabilities going out. Take a look at the remaining cash that's left and set aside what comes in as a dedicated balance. So the first two lines on the right-hand side of the page, the WAC building, that is the balance of the 6 million that we set aside. And then the second line is the amount of money that we've set aside to front-load for the foundation who's collecting money over a period of time. But the contractor wants that money right now. So we've set that aside, and then we hope to gain all of that back.
So, and more questions. So the goal from the foundation is 3.75 million, right? And this number is 5.5 million.
Yeah.
What's the gap?
The gap is the completion and having to, when we started off, that's what it was going to be. But because we didn't say immediately, go forward and sign the contract every time we waited and steel prices and labor went up, we had a huge jump in prevailing wage. And that. So they're going to still keep collecting.
So we're going to vote the electoral.
Yes.
Well, we don't roll.
Okay.
The final figure down at the bottom, I just want to say, depending on how you look at it, it could be a little bit deceiving. We say we have 1.8 extra after we set aside all the rest of these funds and all of those reserves. But last year, this same report up on the dedicated balance, right above that, had a $3 million float line, which was, here's the money we need to keep in the bank so we can write all these checks before we get reimbursed or we collect the funds. And BACS recommendation to WAC was, your float is really already considered in your reserve balances. So you really shouldn't have another line for float. But if you think of it in terms of, last year, we had 3 billion in float and a much smaller balance, but if you take the 3 billion and the 1.8, okay, so then there's 1.2. But last year, we had 6 and 3, so we're actually a little bit less than. But still financially, it's still doing good. Not worrying you.
And as we said earlier, this is one of the positives for us in presidential service.
Any question? And approvals required after this.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
I literally checked the budget and financial statements.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Item nine is board policy discussion. Hearing leaves.
And so as part of the process where we're reviewing board policies, first reading here for the board policy 3011, which is about administrative exempt staff employment benefit schedule. And it basically details the benefits for the president. And so there are some changes here and.
And this is first reading?
Yeah.
And if you recall, we were bringing this forward to have this reviewed and updated prior to the start of the presidential service. So this will come back to you in November for board action. Any questions?
So maybe you have one comment?
Sure.
If you are, I think it would be important if you're considering making changes to the personal leave schedule or the vacation leave schedule based on the discussion this morning, you may want to share that with us at the meeting so that we could make whatever changes before before the person is hired and before we get down the line to where we explain what the benefits are. And so I think having it in place before people come on campus to interview is good. It would be better to get it done one time rather than to do it and redo it.
And you're going to be bringing some information to us in November around the costs of some of those benefit items that we're going to look at. So that if we choose to make those changes and we can delay action on those policies.
Yeah, we just didn't, Jason and I didn't have an opportunity to put any of that in there because we didn't know what the plan was. So if we change, if you don't want to make any changes to the leave, then we would just go with what he has proposed to the.
Well, just an explanation of the changes that I proposed to the policy. I looked at E T 3011, and E T 3011 is lead benefits that fly across the border to the center. And so this one, I just, the changes I proposed just detailed the differences on the final present.
You eliminated the redemption.
Yes, correct.
They haven't been reviewed or addressed for a while.
They've been there a lot of times.
Okay. All right. We will be preparing to go into executive session, but I thought I would check with the trustees like five or 10-minute break first. Okay, so we'll take a 10-minute break. Bring back at 3:10, and then we'll be in executive session for the purpose to review the performance of a public employee for up to 30 minutes.
of a public employee for up to 30 minutes.